I'm here at the Mappleton City Council work session. Figured I might as well livestream it. Let me know in the comments how the sound quality is.
Good evening, everyone. This is Michael Loeb. Welcome to the September twenty-fourth City Council work session. Thank you all for attending. Thank you, sir. All right, council, we're gonna go right into the agenda. I have to reel everyone. Specifically, one of the special ones. There is this process between the week, especially with what I have invested in. Conversation about this, that the last one, all of them have four engineering themselves in the facility. They are actually pure schooling. For perfect performance, for main teams here as well. And of course, our government would do this, if you guys were aware, we had a session where. Played a lot of items out from ourselves, council itself, about what some of those that were going to happen. Who did move this boss there for it. Next, they've worked their best and kind of nationally with what the anticipated summit. And we're here, you know, sent us within the.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good news to y'all tonight. With the core team, I've got a figure tonight that's extra fun. And she won't hear it, but we're having a big here. As mayor, very, very well, tonight is really just. High level overview of the first draft of the potential twenty-eight points, twenty-eight spot five. So as you remember. When we had on last work session or training sessions together, we talked about a lot of projects. Potentially could be on this. All of this, and all of those products you got back in the office fell into one of six categories. So the first column of eleven, you see, are the titles of the six categories. So they all follow the facilities, complete. One of the all sidewalks and trails, roadway, safety, parks, et cetera. So what you can have in front of these nine, yeah, is draft. Of your potential list, list. Also, as you're aware, the county has advised that the city available seems to plan for material one version of seventy-two million three point two's cost. So you'll see that that seventy-two million is cheap and allocated in one of the six categories. Facilities, forty million dollars, we, um, sidewalks and trails, three million, and. For safety, twenty-five, parks, technology. Second page that you have is titled Tier Two. So Tier Two is really a proactive way for the city of Milton to plan for the potential. If there are any revenues, much revenues or above. So as an example, in the twenty-two spots that were current. Cities were sold to plan for a certain amount of revenue, and there is a fact as. Revenue that's. Above that. So rather than being in a situation with no plan, should there be accessible? That's why we recommend to. Tier Two, which has the same category as just. As you all agree, you've got seventy-two million. Potential to plan for the twenty spots. But the projects in total were far in excess of seventy-two. Again, tonight, it's really just the intent, but just even this. We're just recommending that our city, our team, we're closely together. Plan on meeting to talk more specifics to the. There's no action required at this point. There is a draft that is due to the county. But the official list that this council will consider and take action on will be later in the year.
Can you talk a little bit more how did you come up with this?
So we base it off of, really depends on, on the. Chicks or the facilities. With the expertise that's within four engineering, outstanding awareness of. Fast and current projects, we have a first square foot number, construction dollar number. And also assign the number to make that the total start price for that's that for the. So when we, when we last met. Exercise, we had the project south, took a lot of notes. As an example, the municipal facility, that number is specifically based off three thousand of the building. With the apartment debt, building sufficient house on city staff and. So facilities, we feel pretty confident with our first square foot. Number, and then we added this, which he talks to that, we talked about potentially going something. January next year is going to be on years that. In a sense, I think of that. For things like sidewalks and grates, again, we have a pretty strong number. A mile level, that's a house per mile for sidewalks, a lot of people. Sidewalks are bright and many of them. For roadway safety. Mr. Mike, my use and I had a virtual meeting with the property and T director to talk very specifics about. DMT improved projects, interception projects, regulations, safety improvement projects that. County that can pass already at some level of programming and some work that. For the environmental, the environmental situation is. Lead standards and the benefits that the city works to use slots dollars to build a facility and point to pursue. Lead silver, lead gold, we have a first word for processing that. And technology, it runs scans, that's an example for your financial enterprise software, all other cities. Similar, but sometimes instead of. Talked in about their enterprise software, what the upfront cost was, being a source in effect. What that issue was.
Yes, and.
Mr. President, our, just one clarification. Since it's not possible, it's active, I've spent. The heavy hurt the wrong. Reason, the tier two should about twenty-three thousand dollars and then for your property, but not on the street. Twenty, that's like twenty-one. So I'm going to stay for all.
You have the.
On seventeen. So now I have my. So now I'm going to leave this number here. I didn't want to set speed check. So the most being presented on the screen for tier two seventeen has been adjusted. If I'm hearing right, and. The two-two inside is clean, brother.
My question is, is sidewalk, the one thing that was, was beyond. One, it would be for a district. So are we saying that we're only. A county for free now sidewalk, or?
So again, this list is interesting. It actually began in real time. Should one be intended to meet with you, one or multiple times. It takes. You may choose to reality, or remember tier one, we're limited to seven two. I say that in take, you know, you guys may be honestly, but agree that some amount from some other. Devotion or some other.
And you both have a lot of. My initial software, that's for our, my ass, that's for, when you say to say why, why would not be, what do you think?
So what we're trying to do from a best practice perspective, when we're talking about restrictions, so we're. Where the left column is the bad word, man. The center column is the description, and really best practice. Is to have your own categories. So that in the event, remember this is twenty-five. Implementation sometime after that. So we want to be able to lead yourself, the lead way, because sometimes priorities change over the next year. So we could make a very specific type of financial software, we did that in very specific citywide technology. What we're trying to do, again, in the first draft, is nail down categories and nail down. You know, using that category and then offer maybe a sort of more for conversation to break. For each that. That can change.
May I add to the question, so. Certain software that qualifies as capital needs to put it in a, there is some software, remember. It improves, not just council, council, to find this, on, uh, certain software that can possibly. And create a lot of more functions in the finance needs and something like that, maybe cost more. Because this a lot, a lot of block jobs that would come down. And so it could be required, you know. Understand, just. That's in your case, uh, with a Ford software, again, you have a lot of.
I'm going to do something, what's the formula for this?
That's completely, yeah, so what I'm. So we had no control over that, or anything, is that. That they should present a seventy-two million dollars.
Would you remind that I begin this time, when this is very obvious, what's the word?
So tier one is the one is one of the eight spots part of. At tier one total, we saw on screen, you missed, that was seventy-two million, and that's because. Our county has estimated revenue for six-year period, they're proposing twenty-one. They said, ready to see off of a lot of different things, as you're aware, they take some out all the time. Four county lab projects. And then they, it's I assume city based on their population, what their share of this lot should be asking. And that, that information for you, city, for the city specifically, was that you should plan on seventy-two million dollars. So we call that, our recommendation is that it calls tier one, so that you can plan for the possibility. Should we be revenue above the projected amount by the time against this one, or age one thirty-one? Should there be a lot more sales packs than they anticipated would be collected? Then you would at least have plan to some degree of what you might do with that revenue budget. So tier one is the seventy-two million budget that the city spent for. Tier two is for visual app and getting married. And that would be our, that would be our recommendation, certainly, you know. But our recommendation, let's, let's add another session together for all class specifics and. You know, this is not a four-year period or. And shit, man, for tax to be solved, sign, she collectively has the right to buy, actually. Do they concentrate on this? You know, seeing this, with other. Apple products that. Probably most of everything that. What people are allocating now, or funds, by the time they're making that off, building at their rates. And that's not unusual necessarily, this loss, but it's been quite, you know, great spend going up, so mentioned lately. What do you guys do when it's the problem, and I have a lot of rest on. So we feel like the best way that we can help you with that is to give you realistic total product possible numbers. But the way, first of all, we're still, for us, six years from now, but what we can do is look plus that in the past six years. Measure where we are today, and try to account for that, and then. For point for that, add additional escalation on top. But that number is. But you're. You know, whole, then, you know, it's shaking, and part of that, that all things. Steal the cheap one, you know, it's almost impossible to, so we all do. We feel like if seven, six or seven percent of those wants that. And then try to strap that out to. So these project numbers for all of them, but specifically facilities. That, that's a. It's a, they're speaking, yes, if you will, plus. Okay, so I'll give you an example. Right now. It might shock you to know that a typical first square foot construction price. Is, if you're lucky, somewhere around sixty-seven dollars per square foot, which is an absolute long. You told the industry that this four. That's what we just said. So when we escalated, when you said, okay, let's plan for thirty thousand. We anticipate this point five was worth the price, and then. This will take us a situation on top. So hopefully, things not so bad, and these are. Spend some business response hours and then. Did our job. I feel like that's. Thank you, sir.
You said it's a million dollars a.
Yes.
So soon as, and we're only allocating this. Three months, or in some.
If you chose to spend that money, and it is saved, three, no. I have that, like that, I don't want the power version that you were just about. It is saved three million, and then if you chose to only deal with. There, there are very, you might be able to get three or four months, but in general, again, we're talking about a lot of general. Specifically, a sidewalk on a street. We, you know, for potential, brighter location, all that, so. If, if you guys are going to build a model for a sidewalk on a very large. Then you wouldn't need that. Yeah, we're, we're guessing for, we're anticipating worst case scenario. So worst case scenario of sidewalks. And I say, you should understand, because also in this category, it's a lot of. Right, so that's some other. Again, this was just that first draft of, how do we do the seventy-seven dollars based off of? The priorities, if we heard from you the last. We, we know that this is not, I think, exact, we anticipate if you want to modify. Or what that puts in. This is going to be some.
Mr. Mayor. Realistic spots, when you start out, thank the judgment call, third thing, what was that total? From the reading, listen, they gave us from the local public.
So that everything. Let me just frame real quick, for you, and I'm not, I'm not even listening, because the way we trained when we met with the mayor, he said. Based off your knowledge, city map, and what you think he said. Regardless of timeline, the robust cost, whether or not it's city's responsibility, nothing's all day, which is. And we will do a series of. So to answer your question, sir, the total number of ideas for potential projects was almost three hundred.
So listen, we gave them a three hundred million dollars. Little, you know, can you just tell us for all properties in town, or? So the tough job of the project is taking seven hundred million dollars of requests and giving down to the. Obviously, you had a lot of associates who had decided, but that is never happening, county is always never. Ration out of our. You should be aware of this, of course, we, they're not. Tell county that they're going to take all our properties, if you hold it live, we would be wiped out, and that's the problem. She, there's plenty, I think, from, from, for, for us, Jack. We have some leverage here, but that's not yet, we have to go through the. You could have ever some of that. It's all for other sources of funds. That you can use in side. So we'll come, so, so, this place, there will definitely come this philosophy. And what has happened here is, we realize in a young city, I think. Look at all the powers that you are, and without fail, everyone's a leader of the facility. Set a cheap decent buildings with you. One facility that we could all, obviously, that we have, that we have, that are in the land, that will be a purpose, essentially. So to make sure we can advantage the land, I think a great amount of people will be so to me, I think, quite a few people will be so to me. I don't want y'all to think that sidewalks in the middle of this is actually made sure we put sidewalks on the business, you know, some of this stuff. That, we actually have sidewalks in both tier one and then tier two, so. There's a political opportunity, it will go into revenue checks, you have the last three spots. How much do you have until the?
Right now, it's the first draft, tier two sidewalks, and that is an additional four.
So that's total, we'll set it to be, I think, we have, and the box, the. Off of ones and three, and some, I don't know, probably the box, and, you know, just because of one's.
It's broad, and it's worth it, it's. But it's really been, and. A lot, specifically for your sake. Provincial service liberty. A few schools responsible for. Like their sets. That particular. Capital tremendous. Also, God, you know, like, as an example, the potential free services, so there. Just a little over three hundred million dollars of roads. So to service. Somewhere over there, every company that. For your service, you know, stay in top of the. Down the end, I will go many. Generation two, right, and this, and this, it makes you so. Slosk, and three, and then the. Thank you, sir. All right. Okay, all right, so ready, finish, as you said.
All right, guys, we're gonna. Long, here, I'm for the. American agenda. Because. Going on, especially. Uh, sorry, I'm six years, several years, that, uh, forty-four years ago, with the. Midtown, the end of the building, forty-seven. Or, I don't know, this will be the first. They will be going with that. I can see is, uh, partners in some case, uh, so we're sorry. That is a, of course, we can, we have consideration as well. There will be. There's laid several appointments, such as. The resolution of one team, across internal, some of this, and there's appointments of our regional license. Including that, there is, uh, a comment. Sent to Jim, I don't think more than a minute, so. Here's my, I think, business that relates to standing up for this work, which is contracts that were. In force, which is a justice bond contract, that's where the justice, rich, justice. Contract to what, all that's pervasive in our services and. Or to ensure that, that, I'm just. So that will be on the gym as well, within the law and the business, the business, there will be a second, before, procedures. A couple of that, I don't know, which is, which is. Version of patient plan. And of course, seeing there's a. Practice and notability, and a significant. I would talk to you, there's a consideration resolution, report for recycling and waste the burden. We'll have, during the, the term of that. First, be one item twelve, which is special license, we were twenty, our five, and set up all beverages. Of the ten or seven. That's the first. Then there's, uh, twelve, which is the consideration approval of the emergency ordinance of the, or the seven, so.
There's now.
Uh yes, we will have a second meeting, but the request will be adopted immediately um. For thirty days to seven twenty second. The line just to let this first. Same word. Yeah, so that is correct, that's for regular orders, it's for the non-emergency. So the emergency allow them to put the ordinance in place to give you the opportunity to have that set. And the emergency ordinance is.
Okay, um I'll definitely see you know, the items that we have uh later is. Um seventeen eighteen, what I would like to do is uh. And take a look at this, this is a session, also we may never want to have another court session. We may have a real estate, we may send personal. And with the main problem said, I wasn't there to report in second session, we're going to be first. And we say, we say, I, I, all of this name. Uh so.